All right, good evening everyone. I want to welcome you to this regular call meeting of the Temple City Council. It is five minutes after five. Please rise for our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Janet Lou Allen.
With prayer first led by Liz Caraway.
Our most gracious heavenly father, First Timothy 4:12 says, "Let no one despise you for your youth, but set the believers an example in speech, in conduct, in love, in faith, and purity." Father, this is such a familiar verse to us when we think of heading back to school at the end of each summer, and the wisdom we can gain as adults from the youngest of children. As we begin this season of return, I pray for all the schools in our community, and for the continued relationship between our city and our schools. In a world filled with uncertainty, God, I turn to you in prayer to seek your divine protection and safety for our students, teachers, administrators, and educational communities. I express my gratitude to you, God, for the opportunity to learn and grow, and I acknowledge your grace in providing us with educational opportunities. Father, as the school year begins a new year, I look to the city, who is also on the cusp of a new fiscal year, a time when decisions are hard and priorities are based on the needs of the entire community, not just for today, but for future years and even future generations. During this time of city renewal, I pray for our first responders and that their energy and hearts be strengthened. I pray for our staff, that their days will not grow weary, but they are refreshed and energetic. I pray for our city management and city council for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we all act with love for the common good, and may we be good neighbors recognizing your image in every person. We thank you again for our schools, their administrators, teachers, staff, and the students, as well as this council, city staff, first responders, and all those who work to make this place we call home such a wonderful city. It's in your name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Before we move on to the next section, which is public comments, I believe Ms. Mayor Pro Tim Walker has a statement she'd like to make?
I do. I had a shout out to Sylvester Taplin in Solid Waste. He went out of his way to personally visit one of my District One citizens who was having some issues, and it was just so kind, and it's really heartwarming for me to hear back from the citizens that they had a chance to get to see what we see all the time, which is just the selfless service that our employees provide. So, Justin, if you wouldn't mind passing that on to Sylvester, I would certainly appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, I will. Thank you. Very good. Next item is public comments. Citizen two, desire to address the council and any matter may do so. We just ask that you step to the podium and state your name for the record, or raise your hand on the virtual platform. Please understand that no discussion or final action will be taken by the council, and we also ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. So, first up, I've got a kind of a long list here tonight. Why don't we start with Willie Capps?
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I am Willie Capps, 6817, Old Waco Lane. I have two things tonight. On the trash, the bulk trash thing, I have a suggestion. You've probably already heard it. Go low tech, give the drivers of the trash trucks and the truck trucks a clipboard, let them write down their address, and check, brush other bulk as they drive through, then turn that in at the end of the night, and give it to the dispatcher, and they can make arrangements to pick their stuff up later on. Or go high tech and give them an iPad or something else like that. That's one way of doing it. That might settle everybody's worries, doing it that way. But my main issue tonight is renaming General Bruce Drive. Everybody knows General Bruce is the guy who made Fort Hood, created Fort Hood. What is not known is how he did it. His favorite thing to do was to lob artillery shells into your front yard, blow up your outhouse, your barn, kill your livestock, if you didn't want to go. There were people that left that were not making it. They took their pennies for a dollar, pennies for the acres they had, and they left. But there were people that were doing just fine. But like I said, if you didn't want to leave, his worst thing, his favorite thing to do was show up in the middle of the night at your house with the, in the Sherman tank, and tell you you've got 15 minutes to get your stuff and get out, or the house is coming down. This is the kind of man that John Bruce was. Now, I suggest renaming General Bruce Drive after a true American hero. He survived World War II and Iwo Jima. He's a citizen of Temple. He started a successful insurance agency here in Temple there. He served on this Temple City Council and as its mayor for a number of years. I suggest renaming General Bruce Drive to Kiefer Marshall Jr. Drive. He's a true Texan. He's a true Templeite, and I think he deserves this honor more than somebody that did a lot of bad things to bad people, to good people. My own, my own wife's family included. Her family, my wife's family, was told to get off the land, where their patriarch was in Kerrville, Texas, in the V Hospital, dying from tuberculosis. They had to move to town and find some relatives in town to go to because their house, land was gone, and they never got paid for anything. So, I know you can't do it now, but think about it, and I think naming that after Kiefer Marshall Jr. would be a boon for this city. Thank you for listening to me. There are only three minutes.
Good. I'll usually give you a little bit of extra time.
Be nice to this gentleman. He's a scout, friend of the Eagle Scout. He's still here for a bag of crimes.
Well, shout out. Next up, Gail Peake. Ms. Peake, it's good to see you. It's been a while.
Good evening. My name is Gail Peake. I live in Pro Tem Mayor Walker's district. I've been a resident of this community for over 30 years. I've watched Kegley Drive come and go, and I've watched the winners and losers, and Kegley Drive always wins. I came to talk about two things, now I have three things. I knew Kiefer Marshall. I couldn't think of any better honor than to have General Bruce Drive renamed for Kiefer Marshall. So if that is something you consider at some point, please do. He was a fabulous man. I knew him personally, served on some committees with him. First thing I wanted to talk about is trash. I am a fan of beta testing before making a firm decision, and I'm not quite sure what the bulk process is, but I'm trying it out. And I would say that city staff is more than helpful. My husband, Justin, I think you came out and thanked him because we try to work with the, with the city as much as we can. But I am not sure what this will look like, and I will tell you that my experience was as follows. I called, had the questions asked, very clearly size, context, and things like that, and I was told that, put your trash, trash out on Sunday night, we'll pick it up anywhere from Monday to Thursday. No clarity as to when, where, or how. No clarity as to how long it's out there. So I'm back where I was when you couldn't pick up trash, sorry, brush. We'll, we'll just see where it goes. I'm, I'm working with you. I'll see, but if it isn't, I'll be back here, and my tone will be a little more irritated. The other comment is on the budget. I ask that in looking at the budget, the priority be given to first responders, and we really look at growth. I think that Temple is outpacing its infrastructure. I attended the, virtually, the workshop meeting, a week and a half ago, and I think City Manager Meyer did a fabulous job talking about the realities. You know, there's, there's a lot of stones, there's not a lot of blood, we got to figure out, make some tough decisions, and I think your budget does that. But I would say that in staffing issues, you want to look at the priority, first priority, first priorities are first responders, and then I think you want to really ask, do you need to expand other staff to save money? I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure how many staff are on the city's payroll. I asked that question several years ago, I never got an answer. I'll ask it again. I know that there are, I think, five attorneys, which is fabulous for the work that you do. But if you're staffing up to go with growth, and you're not thinking about the older residents, all you're doing is creating a conundrum, and you're going to create more tension as services don't get delivered, and people are feeling that we're paying taxes and not getting our money's worth. Thank you.
Gail, question, before you run off, question. Is your brush still sitting out there?
They told me not to put it out until Sunday night.
Oh, this coming Sunday night?
This coming Sunday night.
Okay, all right. I thought it was just past Sunday night.
No, no. This is the first time I'm giving, I'm giving it a whirl.
Okay. And there are about 950 employees at City Temple right now. So, which is, with 103,000 people, that's about one employee, a little less than one employee per, per 100 residents. In our surrounding cities, that's, many of them run about 1 to 100, some 1.2 or 3 to 100, and we're running slightly under 1 to 100. So, just based upon our sister cities, we're running a little understaffed at 900.
Right. I would give you a private enterprise response to that because I ran a legal department for a Fortune 200 company, last night in Temple, there were two attorneys.
Yep. Understood. All right, very good. Thank you, Gail. Good to see you. Next is Dorothy, is it Babic? Is that, is that right?
Hello, Council. Nice to be here. It's the first time for me. I'm actually a very new resident. I not only just moved to Texas, I moved to Temple. I chose Temple. From Michigan. Anyway, I got a few things. Not a lot of information, but I got this, this little card, top code violations. Okay, you must understand that I bought my house from another state. So, it's not like I was a resident, and I knew everything. So basically, I had blinders on. I'm a senior citizen, and so I'm not looking at school districts, or, you know, like I did when the kids were younger. Anyway, so I moved here, and this, this little thing, I'm sure you have a large book of code violation, or some kind of manual of code violations. I'm sure this isn't yet for the city. But on this little thing, every single thing on here is not enforced where I live. And it, it just... It ma, it, it does something to me that I don't want. It makes me judgmental, and that's the last thing I want to do. I'm sorry. I read some of your material I picked up in the lobby. You work very diligently, you know, for the citizens of Temple. I have an alley behind me. It is, well, in Detroit, they had alleys, but that's where the garbage picked up. Okay, that's history. This alley is, I don't know what it's for, you know, I don't know. But the one by me is so overgrown and unkept, it's, it's almost scary because it's like, those are the kind of places they dump bodies in, in Detroit. Okay? Now, I'll go down, I'm learning the streets, you know, venturing out a little bit all the time, and I see other alleys, and I look down them, and they look like Park Avenue. They're paved, they're, they're manicured. So I had called the city on it, and I was told it was my responsibility to keep up the alley behind me. I'm like, well, is that my property? And she said, no. Okay, well, you can surmise from there what my questions are. Why would I have to clean it up if it's not my property, and if it is my, and are you charging me property taxes if I have to clean it up? But not everyone, no one does it. So, I don't know where that fits in, in our taxes. I just thought maybe if you had, you know, city workers that take care of that, just like picking up the garbage or the recycling, you know, like that. So, and as I said, I see alleys that I'd rather live in than the jungle. The other thing is, I have a dog. I walked her around the block a couple times, and I was shocked at a lot that I saw, according to this, because I have been a homeowner, I'm almost 70. I've had, I've been a homeowner since in my twenties. Okay? So I know there's codes. I walked around the block, every single one of these. Check, 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 wrong, 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 check, check, check. I have pictures, if you'd like to see them. I'm not going to take up your time with explaining it. But what it causes to me, and what I'm trying to make this new life here in Temple, is it causes disharmony between the residents that have to live next door to each other, and someone is landscaping beautifully, and the next door has blight on their front lawn. So, that's what I came to talk about. I don't know your answers. I don't, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I wanted to be in Temple, but I'm very disheartened as to what I picked. And I, I learned a lesson, never to buy, like, when you can't see it, I mean, you can't see everything around it.
Sure.
You know, and take in all the factors. I was just thinking, well, you know, you used to take in the factor about the kids always being safe, and good schools, and this and that, but I didn't have to do that. So I'm just looking, very nice house, I like it, you know, I went through a few. And so the one I ended up with when I got, I was like...
Ms. Babic, first, welcome to Temple. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
And Ms. Davis, correct me if I'm wrong, responsibility for the property is from the street in front to the middle of the alley in the back, beyond your fence. Yep. So those, those properties that you're seeing that are Park Avenue down the alley, that's the, that's the homeowners taking care of those. Not everyone does it. We have another resident here in town that, that often comes with the same complaint. But be sure and leave your address with some of those folks there in the back. See the guy standing up there waving at you? Leave your address with him, and he will, and the phone number, and he'll be happy to contact you. And if you would like to leave those photos, leave those with Ms. Lou Allen there at the end of the dais.
Started writing on the back of what I was experiencing, but I didn't finish. They're yours to...
You know what? Actually, that's actually a good idea. Janet, hand those back, and then go, hand those to Mr. Craig back there, and he can help you.
They're yours to see what I came into, and totally disheartened.
Understood, and thank you for coming and talking to us tonight. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you for listening.
You bet. Next, we have a, David, is it N A G Y?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You're up.
Good evening, everybody. I'm David John Nagy. I'm a resident here in Temple. I moved from Waco to get out of chaos and everything to come to Temple, it was a little smaller, but it's starting to get as big as Waco now. And my concern was, I don't know if you ever noticed the grass on the highways in our loops here? Who cuts the grass, and who keeps it up, and kind of keep our streets clean, too? Whoever did our grass last time did a terrible job. I could have done better myself.
I believe those are state contractors.
They're not doing their job right. If you ever get out there and go right around and look, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Understood.
I like the clean area. I like our state to be clean.
You need to talk to Ms. Babic. Maybe help her out.
And you got to remember, people come here to visit, I want them to come back. I don't want them to say, hey, they don't take care of the stuff. We, we'll go somewhere else. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir.
So, I, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Other than that, I love being here. I love living here. I love the people here. I could get along with anybody. And the ones you can't, you know, you just stay away from them.
Very good.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for coming tonight. Next is John Asbury. Okay, no, we'll talk to you then. Is Allen still, you know what?
Yes, he's...
Okay, yeah, let's, let's take care of Allen. He's next on the list.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Allen Lidle. I live here in Temple. Thank you for hearing me. I really wanted to be there in person tonight. Unfortunately, my balance is not as good as it should be, and so I can't walk on wet surfaces. Since it poured rain before, right before council, I'm afraid I didn't make it because I'm old and I don't run.
That's all right. We miss you, Allen.
But what I want to say... Go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's been a while since we've seen you. We miss you.
I miss you all, too. But I'm hoping to do, to actually be there in, in present, next week, when we do the budget here of the public hearing on taxes, that's what I would like to speak to you just briefly about. There have been many times I've come to other meetings, about the council meetings, but other meetings that are scheduled and on the list, where the elevator is locked to only employees. And thanks to the kindness of the ladies in the offices downstairs, in the glass offices, I've been able to get up and use the elevator. However, next Thursday, I want to be sure that, since it's a public hearing, that the elevator is free for the public to come up to the council chambers in the morning. Secondly, I have been coming to many council meetings, as you all know, and this is the first time I can remember seeing on the agenda a second and final reading that has also had a public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. There's, there are four items that are second readings in public hearings. If you'll remember, we had, we had the, the incident last week with someone hacking into the system.
Yes, sir. I was there.
So out of a preponderance of caution, we are rereading and going to hold a public hearing on those items in case there were anybody, in case there was anybody that wanted to speak on those.
Thank you so much. I'm sure I will. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Allen. Next is Matthew, is it Moravec? Moravec?
Good evening. Yes, Matthew Moravec and Mayor, Council. Thanks for the opportunity. I've been living here with my family for five years. I love living in Temple. It's a great place to, to live and to, to raise a family. And I wanted to comment on the, the item 11, the brush and bulky pickup. I support that, that change that's being made from quarterly to monthly. I just wanted to say I appreciate the council, you know, responding to feedback. I think it's a, a great compromise in between the twice a month and the quarterly to do it once a month, and more than a good compromise. I, I think it's efficient, speaking for me and my neighbors, our whole neighborhood, everybody's on a half acre lot because we're all on septic, and I've got six oak trees in the front yard, seven in the backyard, and to have that flexibility of it being once a month, and I won't be every month, but sometimes it'll be back to back, and so I really appreciate you guys being willing to change it to be monthly. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. So far, that seems to be working out well. Okay, moving on, it is time for, it's time to recognize September as National Library Card Sign Up Month. Do you have your whole crew here, or some of your crews, or just you?
I do. We're here for a photo. Are you going to read the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to read it from here.
Okay, very good.
I don't know why I feel like I need, I just always stand for these. I don't know. It's kind of weird just to stand up in the middle. So, it's my honor to read this proclamation for National Library Card Sign Up Month. The proclamation is from the office of the mayor of the city of Temple. Whereas, since its inception in 1987, Library Card Sign Up Month has been celebrated each September, marking the beginning of the school year with a focus on fostering academic achievement and lifelong learning. And whereas, the American Library Association and libraries across the nation remind parents, caregivers, and students that signing up for Library Card is a crucial first step towards educational success and personal growth. And whereas, libraries provide invaluable access to a diverse array of resources, including books, multimedia, technology, and educational programs, creating pathways for discovery and for innovation. And whereas, libraries provide a welcoming and inclusive environment for all people of all backgrounds and ages to learn, connect, and engage with one another. And whereas, this year's theme, One Card, Endless Possibilities, is a reminder that libraries are for everyone, whether you're diving into a new hobby, searching for the next great read, brushing up on your technical skills, or helping your child succeed in school, it all starts with a library card. Now therefore, I, Timothy A. Davis, Mayor of the city of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 25th as National Library Card Sign Up Month in the city of Temple, and I encourage all residents to support the Temple Public Library by signing up for their own library card and to celebrate the transformative power of libraries. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand in the seal of the city of Temple, Texas, on this 21st day of August 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support. We'll take a photo in just a minute. I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you for the support of the council, the mayor, city manager, and assistant city manager, Aaron Smith, my direct boss. I am the new director of libraries and museums for the city of Temple, as you know, and I'm just very excited to work with all of you, not only for, for this month, for, for Library Card Sign Up Month, but throughout the year, and, and we have a really bright future ahead. We have a very dedicated staff, and they make sure that the, the library is a welcoming and inspiring place, and it truly, it truly, that card does get you into endless possibilities. So I appreciate it very much, and we'll take a photo if you don't mind.
You bet.
Recording and...
Recording in progress.
Okay, next item, item four is titled Bond Items. Item four is the first and final reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a municipal bond debt service, debt reserve insurance commitment, municipal bond debt service reserve insurance policy and debt service reserve agreement, approving a First Amendment of the Third Supplemental Ordinance to the Master Ordinance Establishing the City of Temple, Texas, Reinvestment Zone Number One Tax Increment Revenue Financing Program, and authorizing other matters and provisions related to the subject and purpose of this ordinance. Ms. Bernard.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I think, Kelly, can you work on that, pulling that up? Just, that was a lot to read, Mayor, but just to be very simple. We have issued, or the council has authorized some revenue bonds within the reinvestment zone. And one issue was in 2018. And just recently, we did, in May 15th, you authorized a bond refunding of that issue. And through that refunding, the reserve fund that was set up as part of the bond issue, meaning you had to set aside a year's worth of average principal and interest for the bond payments, to keep it in a reserve fund for the life of the bond, so like 20 years. Well, that refunding released that reserve and now, and replaced it with the insurance assurity policy. And those funds could be allocated to projects within the reinvestment zone. And the, before you tonight is for the 2021 issue. I mean, this, can you just advance, please? The 2021 revenue bonds, they had, we had a taxable issue, and then we had a tax exempt issue. Those both had reserve funds requirements. One was 1.9 million, one was 1.3 million. And tonight, you're authorizing the purchase of Build America Assurance Company, BAM Assurity Insurance. And it shows a premium for those two policies. That's a one-time fee. And it releases those monies to be, for the remaining life of the bonds. The, the insurance will remain in effect, but the, over $3 million can be allocated to projects in the reinvestment zone. And the amendment before you tonight allocates over $5 million that was freed up from the reserve funds and allocates those to projects.
Is the, is the $3 million interest savings?
Uh, no, sir.
Refunding, how, how much was that? Do you know?
Uh, we averaged about on the refunding. It was an average annual savings of about 70 million, I mean, 70,000 a year.
I wish.
Whoa. Uh, but the, a little of 3 million, that is when the bonds were issued, you had to fund the reserve fund, and we funded that out of proceeds. And normally, that would have been set aside for 20, 25 years. You said, it did earn interest. But now, we can purchase an insurance policy for a low price and release those reserve funds, and it go to projects.
Right.
And the reason is from our recent upgrade in our bond ratings to, for the reinvestment zone. So, it allowed, allowed to do that.
As great as they are, anything we can do to put, to use cash proceeds, borrow less, that's a, that's a great idea. Great policy. It's always a good idea, it's good policy. Okay, very good. Thank you for that.
Uh huh, thank you.
This item is subject to a public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak on item four may do so. We ask that you step to the podium, state your name for the record, or raise your hand on the virtual platform. One virtually? The one from the audience? All right. Counsel, I'll close the public hearing on item number four, and I'll entertain a motion on item number four.
Make a motion to approve item four?
Second. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Kirkendall. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item four passes five votes to zero. Can I read five and sixteen together? Item five is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving the tax roll and authorizing calculation of the amount of tax that can be determined for all real and personal property in the city for fiscal year 2026, which is tax year 2025. And item six is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance setting a tax rate of .6975 dollars per hundred dollar valuation, comprised of .373 dollars for maintenance and operations and .3245 for debt service for fiscal year 2026, which is tax year 2025, and making the appropriation for the regular operation of the city. Ms. Bernard.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to go over the budget calendar, we've been showing April 4th budgets were due. Today, August 21st, we're at the, the first reading for approving the tax roll and setting the tax rate. And the final adoption public hearing will be on August 28th. Uh, just quickly, a budget and tax rate adoption process is governed by state law, truth in taxation, and also our city charter. Just a few rates here that are calculated, or our last year's tax rate was .6265. In the budget that was filed, the rate was .75 cents, or 75 cents. The proposed rate that was included in this agenda is .6975, and that was also from work sessions and meetings where council directed staff to lower, lower the rate and cut expenditures, et cetera, to get it to the .6999 or 75. No new revenue tax rate is .6144. Notice and hearing rate is .611, or .6144. And the voter approval rate, the rate if you adopted, that would take it to voter, for voter approval would be 80.32 cents. Uh, again, I know that our work session, we discussed the, the 69.75, 69.75 or 69.99. What I'm presenting to you tonight will be the 69.75 cents. It's made up of two components, the maintenance and operation rate of 37.30 cents and the debt INS sinking fund rate that pays for the debt, tax-supported debt of 32.45 cents. And that is a total increase of 7.1 cents to the tax rate. Looking at our property tax and role and tax levy, just to look at the total adjusted values, uh, there's a, it, total adjusted value is 10.1 billion. Uh, that's an increase of 8.58% compared to the role from last year. The value for the tax increment district or the reinvestment zone is 1.567 billion, which is an increase of 15.35% compared to the previous year for a total of 9.44% increase. Total taxable value is 11.736 billion. Again, this, the next is the estimated tax revenue. When you apply the rate to the value, a total tax levy for the M and O is 38.2 million, interest and sinking fund, a little over 29 million, for a total tax levy of 67.2 million. And comparing that from the file budget, that is a decrease in the tax levy of 3.7 million dollars. And then with the reinvestment zone tax levy for the City of Temple only, taking the rate of 69.75, the levy would be 10 million 932 thou, uh, 10.932 billion. And that decrease from the file budget, a part of that is decreasing the rate from 75 to 69.75, but also some changes in the certified role. Again, the calendar, the next meeting, the final public hearing, final reading for adoption of the budget tax rate role will be on August 28th at 10:00 a.m. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. So, in this room, 10:00 a.m., elevator will be operating.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I confirm that, Janet, it's 10:00 a.m., right?
Very good. Counsel, anything for Ms. Bernard? Okay. Um, items, items, just a minute. Items five and six, which were read in previously, are both, uh, subject to a public hearing. Um, I'll open that public hearing now on both items. So, anyone wishing to speak on item five or item six, we ask that you step to the podium. Mr. Asbury, come on up and state your name or raise your hand on the virtual platform.
Tax rate in 2000, for the next year, 0.6999 per hundred, up from 0.6265 to follow last year. This is, it looks like about a 11% increase of 0.0734 per hundred dollar value. This tax rate is 3.0375 for maintenance and operation and .0245 for debt service. The present City of Temple outstanding municipal debt for this year or next year seems to be about 437 million 950,000 dollars at this present time. We are standing at a double A long-term bond rating, which is nice to have at this point. Taxable value of Temple seem to be about 11 billion dollars, which is about a 9.4 increase from the previous year. The maintenance and operations fund will be about 38 million dollars, and the debt service and interest will be about 29 million dollars. And this is based on a debt of nearly a half a billion dollars, if you look at it. A very large amount of taxes are going to pay for the debt for the City of Temple. It's growing for sure, but yet 46% of the 2026 average loan property taxes are going just to, to address the Temple debt. The City of Temple, City Council, needs to be more careful about their spending of city funds in the future, addressing more of the essential services than, than frivolous projects and activities which have been done in, in the past. A half a billion dollar debt for the City of Temple is far in excess of what the citizens of Temple should be facing. Please begin to make better choices on the spending of the monies of the citizens for Temple, getting essential services first. I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Lidle would like to speak.
Okay. Mr. Lidle?
Sorry, I have to wait for her to unmute me. She didn't want me to talk. Uh, I apologize, Mayor, but I'm gonna throw your members back at you. This afternoon in workshop, you mentioned that yours looks like the, your taxes for the City of Temple are gonna go up just a small 25 dollars a month, which is 300 dollars a year. And I realize a lot of senior citizens don't pay taxes because of their exist, exempt, exemptions. However, a good number of them have already sold their houses, moved into apartments, and the landlords do pay the taxes. So, that means their rent is gonna go up. I know we, that has been said many times, we need the money to continue to operate the city. As the gentleman before said, perhaps we should take a serious look at some of our more extravagant expenses. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience? Nope, nobody? All right. Then I will close the public hearing on items five and six. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item number five. We have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Councilmember Kirkendall. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item five passes, six, uh, five, excuse me, item five passes five votes to zero. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item six, and you do have special motion language at your desk.
I'd like to make a motion, but I also wanna make a comment first, as I usually do. Um, I know it's, I know property taxes aren't popular at all, and raising property taxes are sure not popular. I don't like paying them, and all, I think all of us sitting up here are property owners in the City of Temple, or all of us council anyway. And so, it affects us greatly, too. And I think we've all, along with our staff, really fretted this year a lot on trying to, to do what's best for the city with the resources that we have. And, uh, I know that the original proposal that we were presented on the budget, we decided we did not want to go there and, uh, and lowered it down from where we wanted. And we've just kind of had a perfect storm this year. We've had, in the last few years, a lot of inflation, some lower sales tax revenue. We're in a fast-growing area with some aging infrastructure. We're, we have the disabled veterans, the exemptions that I'm, that I'm all for, but that is money lost to the city. And I could go on and on with the, with the list of stuff. And, uh, but as I said earlier, they were, there were some stuff presented with even a higher tax rate. And we really challenged our staff, our city manager, and, and other city managers, and, and got finance to work through to, to really work through, just cutting what we could. And we dropped off some stuff that I really think our citizens would, would appreciate having, but we just, I guess, can't afford it this year. And they've done a good job on, on a, you know, taking out some stuff that we could stand to live without. And, and, um, and we've whittled it down, and let's say, as, as much as none of us like the tax, tax rate hike, I think this is just necessary to take care of the things that I've heard from citizens that we want in our city. And, uh, and, uh, I reiterate, a lot of this is for our public safety, police and fire that I know we really need. And, uh, having said that, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.6975, which is effectively a 13.53% increase in the tax rate.
And I will second it and also say that we did prioritize public safety. That was very important to us, and that was, that was number one on the list.
Well, public safety and solid waste, which have been big, big issues. And to Mike's point, there was so much that was left on the cutting room floor that, uh, I'm excited that we're able to do what we're able to do, right? We're, we're taking care of the things that are important at the resident level, right? Public safety, picking up trash, et cetera. Um, but there were, there were a lot, a lot of opportunities to move the City of Temple forward that we, that we chose not to take. It was presented to us. We always asked the city manager, you know, give us, give us what you've got, right? Dream, tell us, tell us what you feel like is needed, and let us go in and make those cuts. And we did that, and we, we made some deep cuts. We're gonna provide the, the, the good, strong, basic services, but anything extra was left, left out. So, with that, I, I have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. I have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item six passes five votes to zero. Moving on to item six, which is the consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted in one motion. If discussion is desired by any council member, that item can be pulled for further discussion and, and voting specifically on that topic. Counsel, during workshop, we, we did not want to pull anything, staff. We didn't want to pull anything. So, do we need to pull anything now? Are we just ready to move forward with the consent agenda as is? All right, very good. Then, Counsel, I'll entertain a motion for approval on the consent agenda, which is items 7A through 7X. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kirkendall. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Counsel, cast your vote. The consent agenda passes five votes to zero. Dr. Asbury, were you?
I just, I just wanna make a comment on.
Well, this, this isn't time for a public comment.
No, I'm sorry. I wanna talk about the, the, I can, I, I can talk about the issue you're considering, but whether the cert. No, I'm sorry, I wanna talk about the, the, uh, I can, I, I can talk about the issue you're considering, but whether the cert, the county can.
If it's subject to a public hearing, you can. The consent agenda is not subject to a public hearing. I will, as, whenever I read items in, I'll, I'll state whether or not they're, some items are, some items are not. I'll state, um, at the very beginning, whenever I start reading something in, as to whether it's subject to a public hearing or not. And I think tonight, I think the rest of the agenda items, I think every one of them are subject to a public hearing. Okay? Okay. Pardon? Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
So, in the, in the future, if you wanted to speak on an item that's not subject to a public hearing, um, you can sign up to speak during public comments, that's what that section would be for.
When I read about all the city, I didn't see that in there at all, about that.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to the regular agenda. Um, I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna take a, uh, a large swath here. We're gonna read in items eight, nine, 10, and 11. And Alan, to your question earlier, this is, these are the items that were subject to a public hearing last council meeting, but because of the incident that happened, we weren't able to. So, this is a second reading and a public hearing. I'm gonna read them all in at once. So, item eight is a second and final reading and a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving your rezoning request and a binding site plan agreement from Ag to Plan Development General Retail um, on 8.73 plus or minus acres located in the city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, addressed as 11717 and 11535 West Adams Avenue. Item nine is a second reading, second and final reading and up for public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the release of a 1.343 plus or minus acre right-of-way easement subject to a public utility and drainage easement situated in the Baldwin Robertson Survey Abstract 17, Bell County, Texas, and legally described as embracing all of Hogpen Creek Road and a portion of South P Ridge Road. Item 10 is a second and final reading and a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing an amendment and adopting the tax increment financing reinvestment zone number one financing and project plans to align with master plans, including adjustments to the debt service projects, public improvements for fiscal years 2025 and 20 through 2062. And item 11 is a second and final reading and a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending chapter 15 of the code of ordinances related to the collection of brush refuse and bulky garbage to allow monthly rather than quarterly collection of each on a requested basis. So, those are the items that we covered last week that we didn't get to finish. So, I will, um, I will open the public hearing on all four items at once, if anybody would like to speak on any of those items. Why don't we, while Gail's coming up, why don't we go ahead and take care of Alan? Alan?
Alan Lidle, Temple Co- Temple Co- Temple, Texas. I, I just wanted to speak on the, uh, brush refuse adoption.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if it's just my neighborhood or the city of Temple in general, but apparently we're not getting the word out to the people who actually have this stuff. And so, they're planning their stuff out there like they're supposed to, but as far as I can tell, they're not calling the city, making a request to have it picked up. So, perhaps something in the water bill or, um, like they did with the change in the trash pickup, little flyers on the doors might help us get this done.
Yep, we talked about that Monday, and the plan is that the city is going to put door hangers on each house in Temple, but they're gonna start, um, for the most part, with those houses that already have a brush pile out front. So, those folks are, um, are notified right away. So, we're on it. Alan, anything else? Has she already gone away?
No, thank you, sir, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Pete?
I had intended to be a silent partner in this process, so I apologize for coming up again, but you give a microphone, you have a lawyer, and it's on you. One question about the items that were read. This is, uh, in, from looking at it, it leads to several questions, so they presented, of course, not for discussion, but in months or years later, are we gonna be back and we need a new fire station here, we need more staff here? Has anyone thought about the implications of going forward? Because I am a fan of managed growth, not random growth. And I'm wondering if this is, again, the part of the process of more random growth and not managed growth, and so we're gonna end up struggling to keep chasing this carrot on the stick, and we can't reach that for it. So, really keep that in mind. I have no idea if the questions that are raised, I served on reinvestment zone one. Tracy Bernard does a very good job identifying things, but I'm asking people to stop looking more in the future, not just at the master plan, but the cost of that plan to the residents as you try to develop the services that are going to go along with that growth.
Yes, so, um, I know that we read through that eight through 11, that was sort of a strange way to do that. And none of, well, your question isn't relevant to any of those items, but I will answer it. Yes, there are, so the, the way the city of Temple plans, we have our current tax year plus a five-year budget. And in that, so let me back up. Your current tax year plus a five-year business plan. And in that five-year business plan, that includes, uh, the building of three fire stations and, um, all, uh, and, and really the planning of three more. So, um, you put fire stations, you, where, where you have growth, and we know where those growth corridors are. Um, and the growth is really not that, Temple's growing everywhere, but in many ways, it's not that random. And we, we know where there are already some deficiencies as to where, based on population, where the next fire station needs to go. So, all those are planned out, and you would not believe what it costs to build a fire station and then equip it and then man it.
Um, I, I would beg to differ on that score, because I live near a fire station that burned. So, I do know how frustrating that is and how costly it is and how one has to understand that whatever contract you let, it probably is gonna be more expensive, and it's, there are gonna be overruns. That's just the way it is. And that's why I'm raising these issues now, because I will tell you, from a taxpayer standpoint, the growth looks random. It may be managed, but, so there may be a messaging issue, I'm not sure. But it looks random, houses going every which way, um, roads trying to keep up with the housing. It's not clear who's leading the charge. So, there's some disconnect in the communication of how that growth is going.
Uh, the planning for that growth is not disconnected or random.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, as a citizen, I, talking to other citizens, that is the appearance. So, it's a messaging from the council and from the city as to the plan that will bring people along, because you're getting a disconnect between the older residents and the new growth.
Understood, thank you. Okay, anybody else wanna speak in the public hearing on items eight, nine, 10, or 11?
Could I add one thing?
From here.
I'm headed that way.
Come on up. Is it, first off, is it on items eight, nine, 10, or 11?
Uh, you'll have to decide that.
No, we're not, we're not gonna do, we're not, we're not doing that again. So, I read those items in. Do you have?
It was related to stuff that's been talked about here.
All right, let her rip.
All right. The pickup, the pickup of the brush stuff, I don't have a problem with that. I had it called in, I called it in myself. I didn't have enough to even put in a pickup bed. I put it out there and I called it in, and the city came and picked it up, put it in their truck, and the whole yard across from me had brushed that high as your head, across the whole yard. And they drove off and left it. I don't know that there's any answer to fixing that, but it seemed silly for the truck to sit there and drive off.
Okay, thanks. All right. Anything on eight, nine, 10, or 11? All right, if not, I will close the, uh, public hearing on those items, and Counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item number eight.
I'll move to approve item eight, as was presented two weeks ago.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item eight passes five votes to zero. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item number nine.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Kirkendall. Counsel, cast your vote. Nine passes five votes to zero. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item 10.
Move to approve item 10.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Counsel, please cast your vote. Ten passes five votes to zero. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item number 11.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kirkendall. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Counsel, cast your vote. Eleven passes five votes to zero. Item 12 is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing an amendment to ordinance number 2017-4882 for a conditional use permit to allow expansion of the chemical manufacturing plant on 21.193 plus or minus acres located on Lot 1, Block 1, Temple Industrial Park, Section 26, in the city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, and addressed as 2114 Trino Road. Mr. Deckman?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, so, we're here for first reading on the Palladio, Palladio Industries CUP. I don't know for sure if the applicant is on tonight. He, uh, had to go home to Italy, so it's a little early in the morning or late in the evening, depending on your perspective. So, we may not have a representative from the applicant, but I will do my best. So, we've got the vicinity map on the left and the aerial photo on the right. This is the existing chemical plant at the end of Lucius McKelvey, corner of Trino, Trino Road. Uh, and you can see on the aerial photo that there's several buildings interconnected around the site plan. And what they're doing is expanding within that hash-marked area within their current approved permit. As you see around the aerial photo, there's, there's some rail lines to the north that wrap around to the west. Uh, you've got some other, uh, current working industrial sites to the south and east. The dispersion between them is large enough that they don't show up on that aerial photo. So, we've got some site photos showing the current buildings on the top, showing that, you know, production warehousing building. Um, on the bottom left shows where their employee parking, some of the landscaping that they've installed per the code. One of the numerous fire hydrants is visible in that photo. And then, on the lower right-hand corner, is looking back down Lucius towards Performance Food Group, which is one of the nearby businesses in that area. So, it's a 21-acre site. The UDC requires a condition use permit for the chemical plant, which they have, it was approved in 2017. This is an amendment of the approved ordinance to just revise the site plan. What we're not doing, and we do a lot of these, you see me stand up here, talk about various conditions for plan developments and conditional permits. Uh, we are not changing the conditions on this permit. They appear to be working, so it doesn't seem to warrant changing them at this point in time. So, what they're doing is adding two buildings for production and warehouse of polymers and monomer chemicals that they produce, two storage areas that label as tank farm, a little hard to read on, at this scale, but if you're looking at your screen on, on your desktop, you should be able to read it. And then, there's a new rail terminal on the right-hand side. And what they've explained is that, right now, the current rail terminal does double duty. They receive raw materials, they ship some out. They're gonna have two, that one will be dedicated to receiving, and the other one could be receiving or shipping. What that's gonna do is reduce truck trips. Right now, they're receiving a lot of materials and shipments via ground surface. If we can take some of those highway trips away, put them on rail, that makes more sense to me as a transportation planner. They do show the landscaping on the site with the expansion, they've provided some shaded areas. Uh, the code minimum is 5%, measured it out, and they've got 5.8, so they do comply. Uh, they've got enough parking as it is, they've got more parking than they need for the current employees. And then, vehicle circulation, there's some diagrams that show how the, the truck traffic would, would circulate around. You know, and those are analogous to a fire engine, too, that there's enough room for those vehicles to circulate throughout the site. If there is a reason for an emergency vehicle to need to enter, they've got room to maneuver. So, I mentioned that there was multiple fire hydrants. There's six of them, and each shown by the purple arrows. There's 12-inch water line, there's an 8-inch sewer line, uh, that runs around the property. So, they've got adequate utilities, it's already installed and existing. On thoroughfare plan, this is not directly on a thoroughfare, it is off of State Loop 363, otherwise known as the Dodge and Loop, but it's, it's well back from the road. Future land use is industrial, we're not changing the use, we're just altering the conditional use permit. So, traffic analysis, I mentioned it's, it's located off of the loop, and the loop is gaining traffic. I've studied this for years, I've watched that number, that's 14,900, I've watched that grow over the years. We don't see the same volume of traffic going on to Lucius, and that road is shared between a number of sites, so about 2,000 trips right there at the intersection with the loop. If you've been out there lately, you know that Tech Dot has a construction project, they're widening it, they're extending the main lanes, and they're building overpasses, it's fairly impressive if you go out there. Uh, it's gonna be another year before that's complete, but it is moving along. That'll help a lot of that traffic move back and forth through that area. Looked at the crashes, as you see on the diagram on the lower right-hand side, the majority, all but one really, are on the highway, either the frontage road or the intersection. Anytime you see those conflict points where vehicles are crossing paths, typically where we see accidents. Most of them were failure to yield at the stop sign, driver inattention. Uh, but there were 73 crashes in the last five years. And in terms of what's the impact on the future traffic, I've stand up here and talked about different ITE, the Institute for Traffic Engineer, the use codes, that we can come up based on the square foot or the number of students or the number of gas pumps, how much traffic is that thing going to produce or generate? We don't have a specific use for chemicals. We have manufacturing and warehousing, which are the two closest uses. They're not high-traffic generators compared to a McDonald's or a gas station. Uh, 760 weekday trips, warehousing generates maybe 86. So, it's not a huge traffic generator comparatively speaking, you know, put in perspective with the volume of traffic that's there now. We did send out five notices to adjacent property owners. We got one back in agreement, and that's shown with the green A on the right-hand side of the screen. And the public notice was put out in the paper on July 24th. So, we review, review all conditional use permits, even though we're not changing the conditions on this one. This continues to be a yes for all the categories, that it's well laid out, it has safe movement of traffic, there's not been problems with odors or dust or lighting, they're keeping the landscaping. So, it's, it's green lights on this slide. On August 4th, PMZ voted six to zero for approval. Uh, and staff also recommends approval of the amendment to the CUP, subject to these conditions. These are the verbatim conditions from the current ordinance. And really, the only thing that were changed is number six, compliance with the building footprint and lot layout depicted on the site plan. We're updating the site plan, which is why this comes before you. Uh, if there were minor changes that are approved tonight, as they get into building permits, something needs to nudge around, uh, the planning director can approve it. If it's a major change, we may come back to this commissioner, to the council. Uh, and then, as a standard per code, this was included in the 2017 ordinance. Counsel always has the option to revoke or modify a conditional use permit if they feel that it was not the right choice or it's turned into a problem. And that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thanks, sir. Counsel, anything for Mr. Deckman? This project seems to roll back by every three or four years. It'll be, it'll be a good one, though, they've been working on that for quite a while. Nothing for Mr. Deckman? All right. I'll entertain, I'm sorry, I won't either. I will open a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may do so. Okay. Alan?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a couple of quick things. Number one, I'm excited to see the growth of, uh, man, industrial manufacturing here in Temple. Always great to have more people employed, but I, more often than not, I've noticed that when we do get growth in industrial, we get, we, we give them tax abatements. I just wanted to be sure that this particular growth is not gonna get a tax abatement since this is tax season.
He said something about Patriot Rail.
Palladio has an active tax abatement that was approved when the project was originally developed, but no additional tax abatement has been negotiated related to this expansion.
And it was originally developed six, seven years ago, maybe five, something like that? It's been a while.
2018, maybe. I'm, I'm not sure, to be honest.
But this expansion does not carry a tax abatement?
Unless it falls into the existing agreement, which I would have to refresh my recollection on if it, uh, included expansion, but it doesn't reset the clock, so it may, they may be able to include this additional investment in whatever is remaining on their incentive, um, but it doesn't, it's no additional investment for this, no additional incentive for this investment.
Got it, got it. Anybody else? No? All right, then I will close the public hearing on item 12 and council, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a vote.
I will make a motion to approve item 12.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Council, please cast your vote. Item 12 passes five votes to zero. Item 13 is a public reading and a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit to allow sales of all alcohol on, uh, for on-premise consumption located on 1.9468 plus or minus acres, being the, being the remainder of a called 3.9, I'm sorry, I can't read tonight. Uh, let me just start over. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit to allow sales of all alcohol for on-premise consumption located on 1.9468 plus or minus acres, being the remainder of a called 3.295 acre tract situated in the CS Master Survey, abstract 550, in the city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, and addressed as 1702 Bray Street. Mr. Dekman?
Good evening, Mayor. When I get tongue-tied, sometimes I like to have a drink of water. But what we're here tonight is for a conditional use permit for alcohol sales. Uh, it's at Bray Street, which I'll show you on the map, is directly connected to the frontage road on I-35, or as we learned earlier, General Bruce Drive. You see that the, the site as it is now is currently undeveloped. We've got some site photos that show there is some growth happening to the south. There's new restaurants coming in there. Uh, and as you look at that lower-left photo, there's two things on that to take away is the, the sidewalks, the lighting, which is a dual-purpose, both street and pedestrian light, uh, and the street trees. And down there in the distance is the Temple High School. So the 1.9 acre site, they're asking for a CUP for all alcohol sales. So this is a full-service bar within the, uh, within the restaurant. It's a 6,000 square foot building. Chapter four covers the alcohol and requires a 300-foot minimum distance from churches, schools, and public hospitals. This is outside that 300-foot distance from the school. Still did recommend that the applicants reach out to Dr. Ott, which they did, uh, so there's, we received no objections from the school. They are providing quite a bit of parking, you see on the plan with the circulation. They're providing 135 parking spaces, there are 216 seats within the restaurant. Per our code, they would be required 72 parking spaces, but they're, they're adding more based on what they think their demand is gonna be, and that's certainly within their right. Uh, they are meeting all the landscaping requirements of the I-35 overlay as well as the architecture. We've had a lot of discussions on the site plan, the signage, the circulation. Uh, the subdivision plant is still going through, uh, I think just got approved, but may not have been recorded yet. Uh, so then their next step is building permits in the signage with access management. They are showing two driveways and there was some conversation about that during workshop about the driveway spacing. We're adding a condition that wasn't in your staff report that says, yes, you're gonna be required to have the commercial driveway approach spacing with UDC 7.2.5. Um, have already had, so there's been a swir, a flurry of emails and phone calls that took place during the workshop to let them know, hey, there's some questions. Uh, I've already talked to the engineer, um, Brian's been talking with, with David and Don about the code requirement, what was looked at early in the process, that we gave them the green light. They're not quite where they should be, but assured that we can get them there without having to come back to council. There's, the engineer's already given me some updated drawings that there, there's room to shift those driveways so that they can meet that code requirement. So we're just gonna add that to the conditions, uh, and we'll work with them during the building permit phase. We'll note on the parking that I kind of skipped over, you know, they've got the, the landscape islands, which is I-35, and if you look up on the upper right-hand side, they show a bike rack. So it's not just vehicles, they're also providing access for bicycles. So we're providing alternate modes of transportation, which is a great thing. So the current zoning is general retail, which allows the, the restaurant use with alcohol subject to the CUP. Its future use is regional commercial, which a sit-down restaurant like this fits in with that. It is located between two thoroughfares, 31st is a minor arterial, and I-35 is, no surprise, classified as a highway. So that'll handle that traffic. There's existing utilities to the site, so they'll tie into both the storm drain, the water, and the sewer. So we looked at the volume of traffic. I-35 in this area carries about 84,000 daily trips. Uh, the ramps, to get an idea of the more localized traffic, uh, about 3,000 to 4,000 on the on-ramp and the off-ramp to the north and south. Don't have any traffic counts directly on Bray Street or Matthew Wilson Way just to the south. Uh, we've got some counts on 31st Street up at the corner of Nugent and down by Adams, uh, that it's around 2,000 to 3,000 trips a day going in either direction. When I do the safety analysis, I try to pin an area that's, that's logical, that's centered on the, the project and showing where their likely points of access and ingress are. Um, when I do that for this project, of course, I pull in the highway. So the safety analysis may be skewed by that high-speed traffic on the interstate. If I take those out, there's 23 crashes that were not highway-related. Surprisingly, didn't show any fatalities in this area, a number of serious and, and quite a few minor injuries. And most of the, the contributing factors to those crashes were unsafe speed, failure to control the speed. So that really tells you it's, it's the highway is, is the bigger risk factor, not the local roads. Driver inattention also shows up as a frequent, so please put the phone down, pay attention, drive to the speed limit. Uh, there was one DUI, uh, in the area that showed up along the I, uh, along I-35. So when we look at trip generation, there's a number of specific restaurant uses that generate different amounts of traffic. This would be considered a high turnover, sit-down restaurant, uh, given their square footage, about 600 trips a day. Um, a fast casual restaurant is in the same ballpark, but if it becomes a fast food, even without a drive-through, that number jumps up to 2,700. And then the high school is also a big traffic generator. Um, based on the number of students, the trip code tells me about 4,000 trips a day, which when we could see that reflected in that, you know, 2,000 to 3,000 on either end of 31st Street. So that, that tends to follow. Did send out public notification, notification to the property owners within 200 feet. We got one response and agreement from the owners of the Wheel Skating Center, shown in green by that A. They had three, uh, properties and no responses and disagreement have been received and the notice was published on July 24th. It is compliant with the neighborhood property, doesn't impede any normal development, uh, has adequate access and drainage, safe and convenient movement of traffic. Yes, we'll work on that driveway, um, but it's generally yes. You know, the question came up, well, what if they just had it onto I-35? The applicants already explored that and Tech Dot won't give them an entrance because there's not enough spacing between Bray and the properties to the north. In my opinion, it's better to have the driveways on Bray Street anyway. It's a lower-speed road. You don't have to merge into blazing-fast frontage road traffic because people do head down there like a Speedway. So it is really, it does fit that safe and convenient movement. Uh, prevent odors, dust, fumes, directional lighting, we've been working on that with the I-35 overlay in their permit review, and it does have the landscaping also with the I-35 overlay. On August 4th, PMZ voted six to zero to recommend approval. Staff recommends approval, um, subject to the following conditions. I lost my next slide, please, or, yep, no, understood. There we go. Uh, so requiring the site development plan, which we showed you, uh, compliance with chapter four, which is alcohol, and then UDC section 5.3.15, which is for on-premise consumption. Compliance with the corner clearance requirements of UDC 7.2.5, so that'll get those driveways where they need to be. Compliance with the I-35 overlay. We've already been working through that issue. They've been submitting site plans, building renderings, sign examples. Uh, they're, they're anxious to get this project off the ground. They're gonna be responsible for any damage to those nice sidewalks or lighting and street trees that was put in along Bray Street. The conditional use permit may be revoked if council finds this to be detrimental for the neighborhood, uh, and significant changes to the site plan would come back to PMZ and to y'all. And that concludes my presentation. I take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, anything for Mr. Dekman?
Yep.
It was sure nice to see the traffic analysis study where there was not a single dot around the roundabout. There were a lot of naysayers about the roundabout, so not, not a single one. That's good news.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, item 13 is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please step to the podium. Mr. Lidle?
Yes, sir. Good evening again, Mayor, Count, Mayor and Council. As I said at planning and zoning, I'm really excited to see yet another national restaurant come to Temple. This is really, this is really a growth sign for me, that Temple is on the move and growing hard. My only concern, my only wish was that we can convince, uh, Red Lobster to come back as well. Thank you.
I think Red Lobster is done.
Yeah. I agree.
A little late for that party.
There you go. Anyone else?
I can add up the Razzu's.
Yeah, Razzu's is good.
Razzu's.
Anybody else? Anybody virtually? All right, I will close the, um, public hearing on item 13 and entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kirkendall. We have a second by, uh, Councilmember Pilkington. Please cast your vote. Item 13 passes five votes to zero. It is now 6:30. Thank you all for attending and this meeting is adjourned.